Smith, I'm very excited to have you here. I tell you, we are having so much fun with these virtual town hall meetings. This is entitled COVID-19 stimulus checks and taxes. Come on, somebody. And so, listen, I want you to get excited, get your pen, your paper. It's gonna be very engaging. Our special guest is a phenomenal lady, Mary Nicole Douglas, who has such an amazing story, you know, of really triumph, perseverance, and victory. And she'll tell, she'll share more of her story, but you can find her at N for, I'm M. I knew I was gonna do that, right? M for Mary, N for Nicole, D for Douglas, accounting.com. So get ready, because here's the thing, and thank you for putting, you see the website, go check her out. Just really phenomenal. She, you know, has a phenomenal experience in corporate America, and left corporate America in 2014 to, you know, start her own. And now she's just liberating, she's really got to focus on helping individuals, you know, follow their passions and, and really be financially free. And so, I'm very excited to have her here. And Tony Jackson, as you know, is, uh, you know, is, is our, my co-host, and there's Mary right there, and she's our special guest. I tell you, our, our Director of Technology, Chris Jackson, is amazing. This guy didn't even know he had that particular slide, but that's how he rolls. So with that being said, I'd like for you to understand that this is your opportunity to, you know, learn some information, to get some answers. So if you have any questions, you know, any feedback, we want this to be engaging. And so, we invite you to go ahead and, you know, type in the chat box, any questions you have, any feedback. And it, right now, you know, as we're about to get into it, you might even wanna, you know, do a, what do they call it, a watch party, right? You know, this technology is amazing. And so, you can, you know, let your other friends, your family members know. Because it's so important, right now, with all that's going on in our global society with COVID-19, we must share information. And that's what we're doing in these virtual town hall meetings. So again, if you wanna share anything, you can go ahead and, you know, type in the chat box at any time, you know, love to see who's on, so you can, you know, post your name, say, give a shout out. We'd like to know where you're watching from. Because it's very important that we understand that together we stand, and we will grow through this. So with that being said, I'd like to now bring up my colleague, Tony Jackson, onto the screen, and, and see how he's doing. So Tony, welcome.
Hey, Marlon, how you doing?
Man, I'm doing wonderful, man. Man, you're looking like the Godfather, brother. You know what I'm saying?
Hey, hey, listen.
Marlon Brando was the Godfather, but I don't know, it's Tony Jackson.
Come on now, come on now. We, we are the Real Money Coach, right? Right?
That's right. Man, you look good, man, you look really good. Here, man, I mean, and I know this, you're, you know, with your, you know, success, you know, in accounting, and got an academic scholarship to go to college on a, you know, an accounting scholarship.
Yep.
Man, I know what we're gonna be talking about tonight is really gonna just, you know, just, I, I know it's percolating right now with you.
Oh, man, this is my thing, man, and, and our guest, you know, Nicole, she's been involved in NABBA, and, and she didn't know I had the accounting background, that's new to her. So, but we're really excited about tonight, we're really excited about sharing some information with everyone. And, and Marlon, we know that there's, there's a lot going on, there's a lot going on. Eighty million stimulus checks were issued this week. Eighty million stimulus checks. I know several people that got their deposits for their stimulus money. And so, it's, it's really, it's really a great time, you know, to have the discussion that we're gonna have tonight. Our emphasis is really gonna be about taxes, 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 right? And so, I remember, you know, being a county major growing up, they said, you gotta do two things in life. You gotta pay taxes and die. And so, you know, we can help you with both of those situations, okay? Come on, somebody.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so we're really excited about having Nicole on with us and sharing, sharing some of her knowledge and expertise.
Sure.
But we'll tell you a little bit more about her when we bring her on. And so, just really, really excited. Have a great day. You, we watched you today with Commissioner Leaks, the Small Business Consortium.
Yes.
Great information. So, you know, thank you for getting that information out.
Yeah, thank you, man. And, and you know, just with that, I mean, Fred from the Office of Economic Development, and then we had, uh, oh my goodness, Timothy. Yeah, Timothy from the County Manager's Office. And, you know, again, for those that are listening, you know, please understand that there are packages, there's loans, you know, that the county just announced. And I just wanna give a plug, because, you know, we need to be active, we gotta take the initiative, be proactive. And I know even tonight, you know, Mary Nicole Douglas will be sharing the information, but also really encouraging us to take action. So, yeah, thanks a lot, Tony, I appreciate that, you know, I just wanted to, again, I think the more we can just share this information so that people are not lost. And also, you know, I'll just say this, and, and, you know, turn it back over to you. Please, you know, go to www dot smallbiz, B-I-Z, consortium.com. That is Commissioner Velma Leaks, Small Business Consortium website. And there you'll find a whole slew of different resources, you know, COVID-19 related. So, thanks, Tony.
Yeah, and, and you know, I, I just wanna say this too, because of course, you know, that's here in Charlotte, in Mecklenburg County. But, you know, no matter where you live, because of course, we have people watching this, we have people all over, all over the United States. So, you know, as a matter of fact, if you're on there, just put in your chat what city you might be watching from, so we know where you're at. But in your local county, your local city, there are resources available. And you kind of have to seek those things out. We're doing the best we can at bringing those resources right to you. You don't have to search, but if, if you're someplace, whether like, say, it's Michigan, or whether you're in Illinois, or Georgia, or wherever, California, wherever you may be from, just make sure you, you seek out those, those resources.
Yeah.
And
And I was gonna say, that's a good point, Tony, even for our viewers, you know, go ahead and follow this page, right? You know, like, but also follow it so that we can, you'll be notified when we have maybe impromptu, you know, speaker or guest, you know, because as Tony said, we're just, we're doing our best to stay on top of this thing. Things are moving so fast, you know, and it's just so important. So go ahead and, you know, just click the follow button right now, you know, at The Real Money Coach, because, you know, this is where we share information.
Yeah, and so, as you're watching tonight, just make sure that you put in your comments, we wanna hear from you. We wanna hear your questions, hit those hearts, hit those thumbs up signs on your Facebook, send all that up in, in the atmosphere, like Marlon said, like our page. And we're gonna continue to bring you the very best content that we can. And we're gonna continue to bring experts like we had, Michael Harding, and, and talking about the indexing. Michelle Mitchell last week, talking about the, uh, the loans, the SBA loans, and who qualifies, and the process of doing that. And so, yeah, so we wanna thank you, La Pronda, it's great to have you with us. And so, we wanna just make sure that we continue to, to bring you those things, and bring you the, the best experts that we can find in the business. So, Michael Smith, thank you. And so, yeah, so it's great to have you folks with us. And so, Marlon, as you mentioned, my background is accounting. I, I went to Westerby University and accounting degree, right? And so, I have an affinity for accountants, I have affinity for people who work with numbers. And we were talking about the different loans and stuff, and we're talking about the stimulus program and all those things. Well, guess what? We're talking about taxes tonight, and your tax dollars are the things that pay for those. And so, if you wanna return on your tax dollars, then you have to take advantage of those things.
Right.
And so, really, my intent tonight is, it's kind of to prime the pump, if you will. So, I wanna kind of just talk a little bit about taxes on a very broad scale. And then, what we're gonna do is we're gonna bring in our expert, and she's gonna come in, and she's going to be able to really drill down and tell us about some of the tax treatments, and some of those types of things, because I, I love it, but I, I'm not close to it as I was. I'm close to it, you know, from the standpoint of the things that we do to help people accumulate legacy wealth, be able to pass that on, retirement planning. But really, you know, we want her to kind of just get into some of the details, and just let people know. And I have a few questions for her myself, okay?
Wow.
Myself. And so, that's what we're gonna do tonight. And so, with that, let's just recap real quick the CARES Act. And there really, and Chris can pull that up, there's really six things that are in this CARES Act. There was the federal assistance for companies and counties and big business, right? Five hundred million dollars. And then, economic support for small businesses. Now, we're hearing today, even on the news, that a lot of those funds have been used up for the Payroll Protection Program. And we know that they went back to Congress and asked for another five hundred billion dollars for funding. And then, we know there's various tax incentives that are part of it, three hundred billion dollars in tax incentives. Couple of things that come to mind that we can ask Nicole about when she comes on is being able to take out of your 401K and be able to spread those taxes over three years versus paying it all upfront. The suspension of the seventy-two-and-a-half rule, otherwise known as RMDs, require minimum distribution. And then, the stimulus check, we just talked about that, where there was eighty million stimulus checks issued direct deposit. We know in excess of that this week, people have gotten that money. And I get a lot of questions, do I have to report this on taxes? Do I have to report this as a federal tax when next year rolls around? And so, you know, my thing is, well, if you do, does that mean you're gonna turn around, turn down the twelve hundred dollars? Probably not. So, we're gonna just deal with that. And then, also, there's a couple of other things, like the expansion of unemployment benefits. Adding six hundred dollars to the normal three hundred dollars in, in, you know, for the thirteen weeks, and all those types of things. And what does that mean? You know, is that taxable? Is that taxable unemployment benefit? So, these are some of the questions that we can pose to Nicole when she comes on, and, and, and just get some answers or some directions and that type of thing. And certainly, we know this, certainly, we know that we won't be able to answer every question tonight. We won't be able to answer everything. But for those of you who type in our chat box, we're gonna do our best to answer some of your questions the best we can. In addition to that, we have a new feature that we're entering, that we're introducing on The Real Money Coach. So some of you may not be comfortable typing in the chat box, maybe you're watching us through our, our website, therealmoneycoach.com. Well, guess what? Tonight, we're gonna introduce a call-in number. And so, if you want to call in with a question, that number is going to be there, it's on the screen, seven oh four eight zero zero five seven two five is a call-in number. So you can call in, ask your questions, and we're gonna put this technology to work, and we're gonna answer some of those questions for you. So that's what we're gonna do tonight. So I wanna introduce really this concept of, there's three buckets of money when it comes to, particularly, retirement. There's three buckets of money, okay? And those three buckets of money is a taxable bucket, a tax-deferred bucket, and a tax-free bucket. And when we're doing these live meetings, and we're having these great discussions, we'll ask people which of those buckets would be better. And matter of fact, what we're gonna do right now is I want everyone to type in your chat box, or what have you, and tell us which of those three buckets do you feel is the best bucket? A taxable bucket, a tax-deferred bucket, or a tax-free bucket? And so, be interesting to hear what you have to say, taxable, tax-deferred, or tax-free. All right, so here's the deal. So taxable bucket, a taxable bucket is money that is already, that is being taxed, you know, for income taxes. A tax-deferred bucket, Adrian says tax-free. And so, a tax-deferred bucket, all right, Betrice says, uh, Betrice says tax-free. Okay, so we're getting a lot of votes for tax-free. Bonita Harris, Dr. Bonita Harris says tax-free. All right, here we go. I haven't seen anything but tax-free yet. So everybody is saying tax-free. Well, here's Brad Hudson says tax-free. Ms. Yolanda Harris says tax-free. So we agree with you, Susan, Susan Brady says tax-free. Thank you, guys. So here's the issue. All of us are saying the tax-free bucket is the best bucket. But the majority of our retirement, certainly the, the majority of our wealth, most of it is in tax-deferred buckets. All right? So, tax-deferred bucket. And so, what happens is, we put our money through tax-qualified plans, like a 401K, IRA, 403B. If you're self-employed, you might have a KEO, you might have a SEP, and those types of things. And it goes in the tax-deferred bucket. And it actually grows in the tax-deferred bucket. But when it's time to pull it out, it all comes out of the tax, taxable bucket. Even the principal that you put in. And so, when we bring that slide up and we take a look at it, the problem is that it never hits the tax-free bucket. So it starts off as tax-deferred, grows tax-deferred, and we like that. But when it comes out, it comes out taxable, never hitting the tax-free bucket. And so, what we teach is that there ought to be, at least some of your funds, some of your retirement, some of your wealth ought to be sitting in a tax-free bucket. And so, so often, we hear about diversifying your investments, having different types of investments, you know? And usually, when we're talking about that, you ought to have some cash investments, you have to have some things that are high-risk, some things that maybe are low-risk. But what we're talking about is you also need to diversify in terms of taxable, the tax treatment. And so, we use analogy of this. Let's say you have a twenty thousand dollar seed, and that seed grows to two hundred thousand. The question simply is, would you rather pay taxes on the seed, the twenty thousand, or pay taxes on the harvest, the two hundred thousand? And I think most of us would agree that we'd rather pay taxes on twenty thousand rather than paying it on two hundred thousand. And so, really, that's what we teach, is to let some of that happen, okay? And so, again, it's about balance, it's about having some diversity there. So now, let's, uh, let's take a look at the next slide, and I'll tell you the reason why many people feel that, you know, at some point, taxes are probably gonna go up. Many people are saying that, you know, taxes are really, really low compared to where they have been in, in the past. And so, the dollar that you see on your screen right now represents a tax revenue dollar that comes in, and this is from the Government Accountability Office. And basically, twenty-eight percent goes to Social Security of every tax dollar, twenty-eight percent goes to interest, twenty-one percent goes to Medicare, and fifteen percent goes to Medicaid. And then, eight percent goes to everything else that we talk about. And so, really, ninety-two percent of every tax dollar goes to those four programs. Now, it is my opinion that those four programs really aren't going anywhere. Social Security, they're not gonna get rid of Social Security. Now, we know this, we know that the Social Security Trust Fund has some issues. And when you think about it even today, there's even greater concern because you have sixteen million people who apply for unemployment. That means there's sixteen million people that are not paying into the Social Security Trust Fund right now. And then, you compound that with the fact that if I'm eligible to receive Social Security, but I haven't been receiving it, and now I'm not working, I might just go ahead and start getting my Social Security early. So you may have more people going and receiving Social Security, less people paying in. So that certainly puts a strain on the Social Security Trust Fund. Now, we know the interest on our national debt, we have to pay that. And I, I encourage you to look this up, you look up usdebtcalculator.com, usdebtcalculator.com, and you can see how our debt is growing as a nation very fast. So, we don't think the interest on the debt is going anywhere, certainly Medicare, Medicaid is not going anywhere. And so, if ninety-two percent of all tax dollars are going to these four programs, then at some point, there has to be something done differently. And which brings us to the next slide I wanted to show you. This is really quite something. According to American Tax Planning Institute, for most people, the biggest threat to their financial security is taxes. And the chart that we're looking at here is looking, the black line is really going with the tax rates in nineteen fifty. The tax rates in nineteen fifty. And as we can see, when you are lower income, you pay the lower amount. And then, the higher your income, the more you paid in taxes. Versus looking at the, the, the last tax bill that was passed in terms of two thousand eighteen, and now we're in two thousand twenty, you can see that taxes were actually lower as a percentage in nineteen fifty than they are today. And when you look at the top end of the income bracket, really, we are at a seventy-year low in taxes. And so, if we know taxes are lower today than they were, then why wouldn't we take advantage of perhaps paying the taxes at a low rate today versus what we don't know is gonna happen in the future? And so, that's, that's really, you know, one of the things that we, we want to emphasize here is that taxes are low today, we know what they are. So for a certain amount of your portfolio or your wealth, we should at least maybe pay the taxes today in order to have it tax-free later on. And then, the last thing I want to share, before we take just a real short break, maybe twenty, twenty-five second break here, and then we'll come back and introduce our guest speaker, is, we call it the Smart Money Rules. I called it that, right? The Smart Money Rules, right? So Smart Money Rules says this, there's no market risk, right? Most people say that you gotta risk money in order to make money. And we talked a little about that on the first town hall, utilizing fixed index strategies to eliminate market risk. And so, we're talking no market risk. So Smart Money Rules, there's no fifty-nine-and-a-half rule. Now, the fifty-nine-and-a-half rule says this, if you take money out of your tax-qualified plan prior to fifty-nine-and-a-half, not only do you pay ordinary income taxes, but you also pay a ten percent penalty. Now, we know there's a couple of rules around that, but generally speaking, you're gonna pay taxes, plus you're gonna pay the penalty. And that's why if your cousin or someone takes money out of their retirement plan, perhaps you've done it yourself, you, you left a job, and you had a 401K, and you decided that you were gonna take your money. And when you got the check, it was, you know, thirty, forty percent was taken out for taxes. And that's because of the penalties and also paying ordinary income tax. And we know that part of CARES Act, there's some relief on that, and perhaps we'll talk a little bit about that when we bring Nicole on. And then, there's no seventy-two-and-a-half rule. A lot of people don't realize that there's a seventy-two-and-a-half rule. Seventy-two-and-a-half rule says this, seventy-two-and-a-half rule says that in the tax year that you turn seventy-two-and-a-half, you have to begin taking money out of your qualified retirement plan. If you don't, there's a fifty percent penalty. So for example, if according to the calculations for the RMD, which stands for required minimum distribution, let's say that calculation for you says you're supposed to take out ten thousand dollars, and you choose not to, then you receive a five thousand dollar tax bill for not taking the money out of your retirement plan. And I've had clients come to me before and say, wow, you know, I got this tax bill, I didn't know, I didn't expect it. And it turns out that they had a retirement plan, they didn't take the money out. And sometimes, it's when they've inherited a tax-qualified plan from a non-spouse relative, maybe a parent or someone like that, or, and so, they end up being thrust into that rule and not know it. So, and then ultimately, what we wanna do is help people pay no income tax. And so, there's a lot of different strategies for doing that. One book I recommend is, is a book called The Power of Zero by David McKnight. And really, our objective is to help people get to a zero percent tax bracket in retirement. And so, can you imagine what that would do for you if you had a zero percent tax bracket in retirement? And so, those are some of the strategies that we like to share with people. There's various different, various products and different strategies to do that. But those are some of the things that we like to share. And so, what we're gonna do right now is we're gonna take a short twenty-five second break, and then when we come back, Marlon, you and I, we can introduce our guest.
All right, let's get this back on. Wow, man, people are really, it's just blowing up this chat. La Pronda wanted to know, what's the name of that book, The Power of?
The Power of Zero, The Power of Zero by David McKnight. The Power of Zero, it's an awesome read. When I met David and I went through his presentation, I was like, wow, this is the same stuff I've been telling people. So it's really great, but, but he really breaks it down. David McKnight, The Power of Zero, excellent, excellent read for, and it's not, it's, it's a pretty short read. And it really just talks about the strategy to retire in a zero percent tax bracket. So, and another one that I'd recommend, it's an older book. It's by Patrick Kelly, and that book is called Tax-Free Retirement. Tax-Free Retirement by Patrick Kelly, he, he wrote a follow-up to it called The Miracle Retirement. But if you go back and you read Tax-Free Retirement, it's, it's a great book that talks about how to, again, pay zero taxes in retirement.
Wow, that's powerful, thank you. And again, you know, if there's any questions that you do have, please feel free to post them, we can see them real time. And I wanna say a shout-out to my cousin, Dr. Smith, up in Jersey, good to see you here, young lady. And, you know, hope all is well with you, and you're safe. But you know, and all of those individuals talking about tax-free, you know, it's one thing to, you know, know something, it's another thing to act on what you know. And that's what we're gonna be doing right now, and I'll tell you a warm introduction of, you know, Mary Nicole, because she's phenomenal. I know that, you know, you've had some time with her and meetings, and you've been very impressed, you know? And that's beautiful that, you know, we are doing our best to bring the best to, you know, people through these virtual town hall meetings. So I'm gonna turn it over to you, Tony, and you do your thing.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Marlon, is that we're, we're selective about who we bring on. Because of course, we want this to be a great resource for, for our audience, really. And, and you know, I'm amazed at how many people are, are tuning in. So kudos to everyone who's tuning in, whether you're tuning in from the park, or where you're tuning in from one of the other churches or something like that. Yes, so we're, we're really, we're really glad to hear. Go ahead, Marlon.
And let me just say one thing, Tony, and then you see Susan Brady say, she certainly is phenomenal. Come on, somebody, okay? But, and, and she is, but here's what I would like everybody to do, consider this, because again, it's one thing for you to get the information. I would encourage you right now to hit the share button, you know, on your Facebook Live, you know, on that page, hit the share button, and then you can, I think there's another button that says, uh, watch party? I think it's called watch party. So that now, your friends, your family, they can also get this information. So you wanna go ahead right now, hit the share button, you know, on your computer, and then hit watch party. So that now, you know, you will stream on your Facebook page, because when we bring Nicole up, we want as many people to hear this message, this is really prime. So again, I would say, you know, follow our page, so you can be notified of upcoming events. And at the same time, go ahead and hit the share button, okay? So that you can go ahead and then hit watch party, and it's just two clicks. And now, all of your family, your friends will be able to hear directly from this young lady. So I'll turn it over to you, Tony.
Awesome, so, so, so I have the pleasure of introducing Mary Nicole Douglas. Now, I initially met Mary a few years ago at Joe Dudley's birthday celebration. It was his eightieth birthday celebration up in Winston-Salem, and they had different, they had a whole program over a whole weekend, and I met Mary there. She goes by Nicole, so I met Nicole there. And then, I later saw her a couple of times at the Power Networking Conference with my mentor, Marlon's mentor, Dr. George Frazier. at the Power Networking Conference um with my mentor, Marlon's mentor, Dr. George Frazier. And so I've been impressed by her professionalism. And then uh, lo and behold, her and I have a mutual client. And so last year, we ended up um, you know, really kind of getting to know each other a little bit better and working with that mutual client. And I was so impressed because of how thorough she was at making sure that everything was done correctly and that there was no, no, no uh I's that weren't dotted, no T's that weren't crossed. And so Mary Douglas has been in business, I think, for fourteen years. Um, or at, at least has been working in the accounting area for fourteen years. She is originally from Buffalo, New York. She has office here in Charlotte, one in Buffalo, New York. And again, her name of her business is M N D. Mary Nicole Douglas Accounting. And Mary is a graduate of North Carolina A and T University. Uh, go Aggies. Um, she has spent time working with Price Waterhouse. Uh, she has worked in many different uh areas in terms of as a senior tax accountant for Fortune five hundred companies, including Bank of America. Uh, and she's just been on her own business and she's doing phenomenal work. Um, she's a member of NABA, National Association of Black Accountants, which I was a member of uh on their resume and their bio. And so we want to bring into the show uh Ms. Mary Nicole. I want to bring in Mary Nicole Douglas. Hey, Nicole, how are you?
Hey, I'm good. How are you?
Look at her, y'all. She got the Aggie hat on.
Listen, I haven't been here just over a month.
Well, hey, we live in that course, fourteen uh that stay-at-home lifestyle, right?
That's right.
That's what we're doing. So I, I just want you to do one thing for us. I just want you to do one thing for me, for all our Aggie people out there. Can I hear you say Aggie pride?
Aggie pride?
All right, all right, okay.
Okay, okay.
Love it, love it. So Mary, how are you doing?
I'm doing, I am doing. So my unofficial tax deadline was yesterday, but you know, we have been extended to July. Um, so, you know, I'm tired.
I know a more busy season for you. Probably, I, I would guess that if the tax season had been extended, you probably wouldn't even have time to be doing this right now.
Listen.
I appreciate you.
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of extensions right now.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you taking time out to come and share with us and, and share your expertise. As I look at your bio, I saw things there I didn't know. The Price Waterhouse. Now, it was so long ago, so long ago that I was in the county. It was, it was the big eight, right? So it was Coopers, Price, Ernst &amp; Young, and combined to about four, four different firms now.
Tony, you're old, cuz when I started, it was the big four.
I know, I know, I know. What's that?
I don't remember big eight.
Yeah, I know, I know. I dated myself with that, but, but there's people out there listening, they know what I'm talking about. So, so, so Nicole, what I really wanna do is I really wanna get into um some of the tax consequences of some of the things that we're seeing. Uh, one of the things I've had, I've had several of my clients uh have either emailed me or text me and said, hey, I'm getting this twelve hundred dollar stimulus check. Real happy about it, but is it gonna, am I gonna have to report that on my taxes?
So that is not gonna be included in taxable income on your twenty twenty tax return. It is really free money. Um, so will not be included on your taxes and you don't have to pay any taxes on that money.
So, so I love those two words that you put together, free money. We like free money. So we don't have to report that on the taxes. Now, what about on a state level? You know, like um, you know, maybe North Carolina, South Carolina, maybe some of the other states. Are any of the states gonna require that to be income that we know of?
No, it will not be. And if it's not taxed at a federal level, it won't be taxed at the state level either for the stimulus. Um, and a lot of state uh tax returns start with federal adjusted gross income. And since it will not be included in that, it's not included on the state either.
Okay. So that's wonderful.
Yeah.
Now, the other question is, what about unemployment benefits? And we know that there's a extra six hundred dollars. Uh, I think it's available for thirteen weeks. Any, wha- what about taxes on that?
So unemployment is taxable. Uh, it's taxable even if it wasn't the virus and it's still taxable, whether it be the, you know, um, North Carolina's max is three fifty, unfortunately. Um, so whether it be the three fifty or the six hundred, it's all taxable. Um, so it does have to be picked up. Now, when people apply, they do ask you, do you wanna pay your taxes now? And get the withholding taken out or you don't. So it's, I always talk about now or later. So either you pay the taxes now or you pay the taxes later.
So you're gonna pay taxes?
You're gonna pay the taxes on the car.
Now or later?
Now or later, now or later. So, you know, I tell people to, I suggest going, going ahead and paying now, but because of the crisis and, you know, everything going on, they might need all of the funds now. Um, so they can go ahead and take it now, especially since their income for this period of time is lower. So their taxable income will be lower for the year, possibly.
That could be good news for a lot of people. Uh, one of the silver linings is that I might be at a lower income tax bracket because of, of what's going on right now.
Correct.
Okay. Now, one of the things that I always talk about and it comes up a lot um is the RMDs, required minimum deduction. Um, we know the Secure Act back in uh September, whenever it was passed, raised the age from seventy and a half to seventy-two and a half. And so there is an option for people to uh not take their required minimum deduction. Uh, I, I guess really my question is, I've found that a lot of my senior clients uh ended up pay, owing taxes uh because of the new tax bill in, in twenty eighteen and, you know, and a lot of them said, well, do I have to take this RMD? I don't wanna take it. I don't need the money, which is a great position to be in. So what advice would you give our seniors who ended up owing taxes either in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen? What, what, what would you recommend for them?
So the thing is, the required minimum distribution can be, um, see, the thing is, it's added to income. So if I'm already, you know, because I do have clients that make more in retirement than they do, than they did when they were working because of the way they saved and invested. So they're already at a higher taxable income. They're at a higher tax rate. And so they don't wanna add to it because it's more taxes they have to pay. Um, so the reality is, if you're already making, let's say your taxable income is a hundred and they're making you take a required minimum distribution of another ten, that, that's making your income ten thousand dollars more. And so some of them just like, can I just not take it? I don't need it. I don't wanna take it, leave it in there. But the rules say you have to. So great news that they won't have to for twenty twenty because of what's going on. Another reason why it's good that they don't is because a lot of the money that i- is, is invested in stock. So they will be taking it out and, and incurring such a loss because stocks have dropped.
Yeah. Right, absolutely. So and, and you know, what's interesting is, is I'm glad that you have clients and that's really helpful and hopeful and gives us all hope, right? Because uh, there's many of us that would love to be in a higher, higher income in retirement than we are when we're working.
Right.
And a lot of times what we've bought into in the past is that um, you know, put all this money in these tax-deferred vehicles and because when you retire, you're gonna be in a lower tax bracket. But what we know happens is when you retire, there's a couple of things. Um, and you can speak to these things. One, one is what about your, your personal uh deductions for like your, your minor children and all those type of things? I mean, I, I'm hoping that when I retire, that I'm not having, carrying no dependents, right? I'm hoping my dependents can be carrying me. Come on, all right? You, you don't have a dependence. Um, and we know that in this uh last tax bill, two thousand eighteen, that a lot of people who were itemizing before no longer can itemize. And sometimes that can have an impact on your taxes. Uh, and so there's a lot of different things that can happen that may not necessarily put us in a lower tax bracket in retirement as we thought we might have been.
So my answer to your question, um, when you asked that question about tax-deferred, tax-free, and there was another one, was it depends. And so, you know, no one situation can be the answer for all. And it just really depends, like, what are your goals for when you retire and where do you see yourself being? Um, and it's very different with my clients cuz I'm never gonna tell you to make less money. I'm always gonna tell you to try to make more money. So we have to think about what's gonna happen when you retire because my goal is that you have a lot of money when you retire. Um, and so, you know, that's something to think about, but it also comes with creating a strategy and a plan for what you want when you retire, you know. So my mom is actually Susan Brady. Shout out Susan Brady. She's graduating, she's retiring in January. And so, you know, my sisters and I have been working with her on what her strategy is gonna be, what her plan is gonna be. And when you have a strategy and a plan, you can make an adj- make adjustments. So because of what's going on with the economy, we won't be taking that, you know, some of that retirement out. We're leaving it in there so that it can grow back, you know. And she's in a position where she won't need it. So you have to have a team. You have to have a relationship. And so, you know, that you can make adjustments as needed and you, you know what you're planning for.
Well, that's, that's a great point because what I always tell people is that you do need a team. You do need a team. Uh, and part of that team needs to be someone who's versed in taxes. We need someone who can help you with wills and trusts, uh, certain insurance, retirement stuff, stockbroker. So it takes really, it takes a real team to really do the planning quite well. Let's, let's have a piece of that.
Right, right. And then I wanna go back to something you said about um standard deduction versus itemized deduction. So it is true that in twenty eighteen, they changed the way that, um, they increased the standard deduction. Um, and they took away personal exemptions. And so although some people, so you still have the choice. You can itemize or you can use standard deduction. We're always gonna choose whichever one is gonna lower your taxable income the most. So now for a married person, itemized deductions went to twenty-four thousand four hundred for twenty nineteen. So if your itemized deduction is because you have a house and all that, kinda get the mortgage insurance, you get the real estate taxes. If that only came up to twenty thousand, that's nice, but I'm using that twenty-four four. So it's not that they took it away, it's just that they gave you an opportunity, honestly, to lower your taxable income more.
Okay, great. So, so sometimes we, we have to get to the point where we realize that if we're, if we're, let's, let's say it this way, you can't wait until time to file your taxes to tax plan, right? And so, you know, so you need to do that ahead of time, working with a professional like yourself. So that when that time comes, because ultimately what we wanna do is we don't wanna owe IRS nothing and we don't want the IRS to owe us anything.
Right, right.
We want to break even.
Right. So it's key what you said, it's about relationship, right? And it's having that relationship already in place. So my clients, when this whole virus came about, my clients who already have, my clients have a relationship with me already. So one, I can speak to what was needed very quickly. You need to do this, you're gonna have to do this, you need to do this. No, don't take that long. You need to do this. So that was easy because we already had a relationship. I already knew what to tell them, I already knew how to guide them, right? So it was very easy for them to get in touch with me. It was very easy for me to make a decision um, or help them make a decision on the steps they needed to take um and give um different solutions to, to what they were experiencing. Now, when new people are contacting me, one, I'm already busy because it's tax season and then my clients come first. So I am able to help new people. However, it's just not the same priority because we don't have that relationship yet. So then I have to figure out what's going on with you and how can I help you because I don't even know you yet. I don't know your situation. I don't know what's going on with your business. Um, and unfortunately uh because of some of the requirements that are needed for the people that are self-employed that didn't have any bookkeeping, that didn't have their taxes completed, um, they are unfortunately are, are losing out on money because they weren't ready.
Okay, great. And, and so, you know, it's kinda like what we tell people. Uh, a couple of things, like, you know, when, when I was an agent, I did homeowners insurance and car insurance. It's like, you know, if you're, if you come home and your house is on fire, it's too late to buy the insurance. Uh, you know, and so it's just a matter of, of proper planning, right? Proper planning uh prevents poor performance, right? So.
We have a lot of poor performance going on right now. A lot.
A lot of poor performance.
A lot, a lot. And you know, today it was hard for me to hold my tongue because unfortunately, this is a very unfortunate situation for everyone. But if you did not prepare in any kind of way, because we always talk about that emergency fund, this is the emergency.
Yes.
This is the emergency. And so if you did not save any money, you're feeling a little worrisome right now.
Yeah, you feel in a certain kinda way.
In a certain kinda way right now. Probably one of the people that's calling me going crazy about the stimulus check.
Right, exactly, exactly. So, so those are, that's great information. Um, now, y- you mentioned a little bit about the uh stimulus checks. Uh, and then we also know there, there's SBA programs, there was disaster relief. We know the pay, payroll protection program, which is out of money. Uh, I know that we have uh, you know, pastors on the phone, we have nonprofits, we've got small businesses. Uh, we, we have, you know, some joint clients on the here that are independent contractors and that type of thing. So if I get that ten grand, right, if, if that comes to me, uh, is that gonna be reportable income? What, what happens from a tax standpoint? Do we know with that?
Okay, so let's talk about that ten thousand dollars for a minute. So the ten thousand dollar loan could be forgivable if you use it for payroll, rent utilities, rent utilities at the twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent for the payroll. Now, at first, when it first came out, it was, now you, you have to remember that that everything is happening real time. Things are changing hourly, thing, it's just, everything's real time. So at first it was, get this ten thousand dollar forgivable loan. Okay, so of course, everyone's applying. We're gonna get this ten thousand dollars. You really don't have to do anything to qualify, really. Um, and then it became, okay, we're gonna give you a thousand dollars per employee. So then that knocks out everybody that doesn't have employees, right? Um, and it creates a different kinda situation. They also said you're gonna get in three days. Well, I don't know, I know one person that's received um funds from that. So, um, these programs are out there, but like you said, PPP is out of money. We don't know at this point if the people who were already in line designated, so you had to fill out an application. And on that application, it is, the loan amount is on there. So when they say it's out of money, I don't know if it includes the people who were already in process. Does it include the people that were already approved? So there's a lot we just don't know. Um, but there are a lot of people already in the pipeline and everybody's kinda clueless as to, um, again, I know one person who's gotten the PPP, um, but other people are approved and other people are in the process. So I don't know if they're accounted in um the funds that were used or not. So there's a lot we just don't know. Um, and unfortunately, the lenders don't really know a lot either. They're experiencing the changes just like us. Um, and so it's, it's just a lot right now. Um, I would tell everybody, don't bank on that money. Do not bank on the money. Maybe money.
Don't go out and pre-spend that money. Well, and then, you know, generally speaking, when, when it's a loan, generally speaking, if you borrow money, that's not a taxable transaction.
Right.
But, but if the loan is forgiven, then does that now become income?
I am not sure yet. So I don't know if they're gonna look at this as a grant, even if it started out as a loan, but then if it's forgiven, is it a grant? Because a loan is not taxable income. It, the loan is not income at all. Um, so it just depends on how it's gonna be classified. So it could be that if it's forgiven, it's included in income. Um, or it could not. So we still don't have guidance on that piece totally yet. Um, so it, it could be. Um, the loan is definitely not income. So.
Plan for the worst and hope for the best. So if I had a, a ten thousand dollar loan and it was forgivable, I might just plan to pay taxes on that. And then if I don't have to pay for it, then yay, you know.
Right.
You kinda plan for the worst and hope for the best and.
Right, exactly.
Okay, great, great. Now, uh, one of the things we wanna talk about, there's been a lot said about this is a great time because tax rates are relatively low. You may be in a lower income bracket because of being out of. You may be in a lower income bracket because of being out of work. This is a great time to maybe do some conversions. Of your, maybe your 401K and IRA and converting them over into Roths. Or using those funds, um, to, uh, get into something that's gonna be a tax-free benefit later on. Uh, do you know anything about that? What's, what's, what's your thoughts there?
Well, so definitely what I've been saying is we have to leverage this virus situation. As a way to get ahead because there are several ways that you can get ahead during this time. Um, as far as converting it over to Roth, you know, if you're gonna have lower, a lo- lower income. Then that definitely may be, uh, an avenue for you to get some money over, pay a lower tax rate on it, right? Because if you have lower income for the year, then you know, your tax rate's gonna be lower. And so it would make sense to do that. Um, it's also the time we talked about, um, being able to take out of your 401K. So. Uh, you are supposed to use this money for help during this virus time, right? Um, this, some people that have a lot of money in 401K, you can take up to a hundred thousand dollars out penalty free. And can pay the taxes back over three years. So if you had a team. And you had some plans in place and you wanted to do certain things during this time to buy assets and get ahead. It would be a good time to do that. Very loose about what you're using it for, so.
So, so here, here's the thing that I think is so important, uh, if you're considering doing that. Number one is you gotta know that you qualify. Because, uh, typical rules were, you know, fifty thousand out of the 401K. You could, you know, take fifty thousand dollars a loan from your employer, those type of things. In order to avoid that penalty, you have to have had a diagnosis of Corona. Or a spouse, or it has to, you have to prove that the Corona situation has had some impact on you. In order to avoid the ten percent penalty. Everyone just can't line up and get the, the ten percent penalty way. The other thing is, I, I think, and maybe you could speak to this, if you're, if you're doing that. And you still know you gotta pay the taxes, right? Cause you can't avoid the taxes. Even if you could avoid the ten percent penalty, you still gotta pay the taxes.
Right, so what, everybody at this point is kind of affected by Corona.
Every, you know, who isn't?
Everybody at this point is affected by it, one player or another. That part is kinda easy. The tax piece is something else. And so the deferring of the taxes, cause they als- also, if you pay it back within three years. Then there's no consequence at all, whether it be tax or the penalty.
Right.
So it's all about strategy.
Now, i- if I can spread that out over three years, you know, tax year twenty twenty, twenty one, and twenty twenty two. Um, it, is it, is it reported in three increments? Or do I report it all in twenty twenty, but just can stretch the liability of it out over three years?
So I believe that it's gonna be spread out over the three years. Distribution piece, and that's why the taxes are gonna go along with the years that it's reported in.
Okay.
Uh, ten nine nine R would have a third, a third, a third.
Okay, so, so basically what's gonna happen is, uh, basically I get thirty three thousand, uh. Ten ninety nine R this year, thirty three thousand next year, and thirty three the following year. Which actually turns out to be better for them. Because it'll help keep them in a lower tax bracket rather than having to report all that in one year. And thus having a larger tax liability and spreading that over three years.
Exactly.
Okay.
Now, the part I don't, um, know is if you pay it back, then I guess you can go amend those taxes. Yeah.
Okay, which, which for you, that, that's, that's more business for you.
Business for me, you know, I've been trying to be fair, very sympathetic for everything going on because it is very sad. I have a ni- sister that's a nurse practitioner, uh, you know, working, so it is, it is worrisome about that. Um. You know, so there are definitely some negatives to this, but there are some positives as well. You can make it positive if you.
Kinda take advantage of those things if you got the right people and you can.
Exactly.
So, so here, here's the other thing that to me makes a difference. Because you can choose to have those taxes withheld out of that distribution.
Yes, you can.
And, you know, but I think if you, the best case scenario is if you don't have to do that.
Feeds the purpose.
The other thing that, that we might talk about in, in a future show is that, you know, there's programs where you can get some leverage. Uh, and the one thing that we wanna talk about is what you're going into. And, you know, we did a lot of talking about that, you know, a couple of weeks ago, April second, matter of fact. Uh, if anyone wants to go back and, and, and listen to that, or even, uh, you know, email us at info. At the Real Money Coach, we can send you a, uh, a shortened version of, of that town hall. Is you wanna make sure that if you're taking the money out of an equity-based program. That you're putting it into something that's gonna be equity-based so that when the market rebound, you rebound with it.
Right.
And so you don't wanna permanently lock in and lock, so you gotta be careful about what you're putting it into. And making sure you put it into something that's gonna be beneficial for you.
Definitely. Can we talk about stimulus for a minute?
Let's talk about stimulus.
Okay, cause stimulus is on my mind, cause it's been on everybody's mind and they've been calling, emailing, texting.
Okay.
Um, so everybody could not get the stimulus at one time. So just because you did not get it yesterday does not mean that you're not getting it. So we have to have a little bit of patience. In this, you know, this is all new, this is all a lot. There was no way they can give everyone stimulus at the same time. So I would suggest to people that they do not get frantic. They do not, the, the website that the IRS gave to update, uh, direct deposit and your address isn't working. It isn't working. So then everybody gets frantic and says, it's saying that my information isn't on there. It's saying that, you know, it's not working. So the best thing to do right now is to just have patience. Your accountant and your tax preparers, they can't give you any answers about this. The only thing we can answer is. If you're getting a yes or no based on your income on your twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen tax return. That's it. That's it. They will not take, the only reason a stimulus check will get taken is if you have back child support. That's the only reason. So if you owe the IRS, if you owe North Carolina, if you have collections, none of that matters, you're still gonna get the stimulus check. The only time you will not get it is if you have back child support.
Uh, and, and we really addressed that too, and I'm glad that you, you reiterated that because. Um, I had questions from people that says, well, I owe the IRS money, am I gonna give the stimulus check? And I was like, yeah, you will. I mean, this is the one time that you're forgiving and you're actually still gonna get the stimulus check. You won't have to pay taxes on it. So it's, it's a great situation. And I know we're really coming up to, um, up to an hour, but there's a couple more questions. I really want to address, so if, uh, if you all could just be patient with us, we're gonna run just a few minutes over. Uh, but I think we're getting some really good information. If you like what we're telling you, just let us know. Uh, hit those hearts, hit the, the thumbs up, comment, all that type of thing. And again, remember. We may take one or two callers, uh, at seven oh four, eight hundred five seven two five. So we're gonna take maybe one or two callers, we'll see, we wanna test that system out actually. So now. The, the one thing, uh, that someone asked, and, uh, this doesn't really. Uh, has to do with the CARES Act, but it has more to do with Secure Act. And what is the best strategy to decrease inherent taxes? Now, one of the things that we know is that there used to be this thing called a strict IRA. So if I received. Um, inheritance from a non-spouse, like my parents or something. I could take that money, I could stretch it out over my lifetime and then therefore, uh, decrease the taxes. And we know that that was eliminated with the Secure Act. And so I know my answer to that question. But I'd love to hear what you have to say about decreasing inherited tax.
Okay, so are they, uh, what are they receiving the? It depends on what funds they're receiving, cause there's certain funds that are not taxable when you, when it's inherited. So are they referring to, um, like if they got a stock account and the stock has, and they. Are they talking about like a stock account? Or are they talking about, cause we know insurance is not taxable. Insurance is not. My kids millions of dollars, they won't pay a dime in taxes, insurance.
So, so I can have a million dollar life insurance policy, I can leave that to my kids and they pay what?
Zero.
Zero taxes.
Zero taxes.
Love that, don't we?
Zero taxes. Now, when it comes to, uh, retirement income, so there might be some pension. That you'll have to pay taxes on and it depends because the employee contribution isn't taxable. Um, so it just depends on what kind of money that you're getting. And so again, it's about that planning, right? And so you really can't, most of the time you do not know your parents or whoever's information before they die. But once they die and, and it becomes yours, then you have to have that planning meeting with your team. To say, okay, these are different types of funds that I have. What is the best way for me to deal with these funds to avoid as much taxes as possible? Because different, uh, investment, uh, items have different taxable situations. So it really just depends on. What it is that you're, you're getting. Um, you don't necessarily have to cash everything right away. So let's say you inherit a stock account from a parent. It's not that you have to all of a sudden sell all of the stock. You can put it right into your portfolio, let it keep building. So you don't have to sell it right away.
It's important because again, when I talk to someone, there's, there's really three questions I gotta know. I gotta know, uh, where the money come from, what do you want this money to do, and when do you want it to do it? If I don't know those three things, I really can't tell you anything without knowing that. And so. You know, if it's tax qualified money, that's gonna be treated really different than if it's non-tax qualified. Matter of fact, we'll put up the question about, I think it was Harris about annuities. Same thing with annuities. Annuity can be a tax qualified plan or it could be a non-tax qualified plan. So it really depends on the source of the money. And then those other two important questions, what do you want it to do and when you want it to do it? And so, um, tho- those are great. Now.
And so most of the time, um, most of the time my answer for everything is it, it depends, right?
Right.
It's like you said, where'd it come from? What do you wanna do with it? You know, it depends.
Right. And then the other thing is, um, you know, creating. You know, when you ask, what do you want it to do, is do you want it to create lifetime income? Or do you want it to, you want it just to be there to, to just grow? You know, those types of things are also very important. Where it come from, what do you want it to do? And when do you want it to do it? And then we all gotta all work together to come up with a great plan. The other thing, um, that we also see is the use of life insurance. Cause some things we can't avoid to pay the taxes on. But we certainly could have something like life insurance to, um, pay out and cover the tax liability.
Mm-hmm. And usually, um, whatever the vehicle is, is enough to cover the taxes too. So if I got pension from a parent. Um, usually they're taking the taxes right from that. So. Leave me fifty thousand, they take the taxes, I might get thirty or whatever it is, you know. So usually, there's a way to pay the taxes from whatever the investment is.
So you're not coming out of your pocket.
Exactly.
Right. Uh, and then I think the other thing is to, um, you gotta remember that some of those things would. Can put your own income into a higher tax bracket.
For sure.
Again.
To you, right.
Right, it's about planning. So let me see, um. Any other things you wanna share? Do we have any other questions out there? I know, um, you know, thanks Jarvis for, for sharing. Um, it's great information. Um, Nicole, you've, you've, you've been, you've been great. Um, and I just wanna see if there's anyone, uh, that wants to call in. Otherwise, we're gonna bring Marlon back on. And, and we're gonna, uh, just prepare to close out. Um, and just give any parting words to you, Nicole, any, any, anything, why, why don't you tell us? Why don't you tell our viewers how they can get in touch with you, uh, if they need a tax professional? And so forth.
Shout out to my sister Regina who's listening in. I love my family. So my parting words would be to save. Um, if you've never had a budget before, you need to get one. Um, you have, once we get through this crisis, I hope and pray that people. Really see the importance of having a budget, of saving and getting in position. Cause we never know what's going to happen, but we know that something is gonna happen. So. Everybody, this is really a time to really do some self-assessment and figure out what you need to be doing financially. Um, when you get those stimulus checks, please use that for bills, for paying your rent, for. Things that will help you, um, get ahead. Um, because although evictions are stayed for, for now, when this is over. The landlords want their money. Like this is, this, it's not a game, it's not a game. So stay off online shopping. Um, leave fashion Nova alone. Um, you know, those are my parting words. Um, if you need to contact me. You can reach me at info, I N F O, at M and D Accounting. Um, our number is eight six six seven seven four nine four four seven. Or we do have a local line that you can text to, and that is nine eight zero nine three nine zero nine three nine. Um, on Facebook, we are M and D Accounting and on Instagram, same thing, M and D Accounting. We have a Twitter too. It's all M and D Accounting.
All right. That girl was like, yo. Tag me down, okay? Come get it, come get it. Listen, y'all, I was just watching and, you know, I'm an engineer by training. And I was looking at these two accountants. Hey, if anybody doesn't have any other questions, we'll keep on talking. I love. So listen, I wanna say thank you. This has been phenomenal. And I want our listeners to really hear what Nicole was saying. It's all about planning. It's all about having a team. I mean, let's really break it down, you know? It's a lot, you have a stimulus package and, and the CARES Act and blah, blah, blah. But the key is we're gonna grow through this. See, life happens to all of us. But the question is, are you going to learn the lessons? Life is ups and downs. But you see, the beautiful thing is you have to now say to yourself, you know what? Okay. Hey, life happens, there's things outside of me, but I have to take control. And I talked to my good friend, Dr. Dennis Kimbrough, author of Think and Grow Rich, A Black Choice. If you have not read that book. I wanna encourage you, use this time right now, readers are leaders and leaders are readers. And we will have him on our. One of our, uh, town hall virtual meetings coming up. But I want you to understand what you put in your mind. This brother was breaking it down and, and it's so amazing. We're gonna have him on a, uh, we have a, uh, winning, uh, Wednesday webinar. Uh, at three P M, okay? And it'll be on this station as well, you know, The Real Money Coach, three P M, mark your calendar. And what is that? That is, uh, April twenty second, I believe. And so I'm giving a shout out because I, as Nicole said. You know, it's mindset, right? It is mindset and we have to be ready. Because yeah, COVID nineteen, woo, it just knocked us off. But what's gonna be the next thing? And the question is, are you prepared? Seven Ps, prior proper planning prevents pitifully poor performance. And so I have to share this because there was a lot of great information, but don't get lost in the sauce. It's time for each one of us to say, you know what? Let me do some reflecting. Uh, we have a sister on here, Phyllis. Phyllis is a master in budgeting. So if you wanna get some information, that's what, uh, Nicole said, yo, get a budget. And so, you know, info at the realmoneycoach.com. And I wanna encourage you, you know, don't let this just be, oh, I just watched this, you know, this, uh, town hall meeting, Facebook Live. No, let's go ahead, contact Nicole, send an email to info at the realmoneycoach.com. So that we can share information, right? It's, it's free, it's no obligation. But I want you to understand, what you do today will dictate where you'll be tomorrow. So I just had to jump in and just, you know, I'll turn it back over to Tony, closing words, but this has been phenomenal. And you wanna have the team. You saw Nicole, she's like, it all depends. It depends on the situation. I can't give you a blanket answer. But that's why you wanna have someone like Nicole, right, on your team, M and D Accounting. Because you wanna have somebody who has the professionalism, has the expertise, and also has the heart. I just wanna say something about Nicole, you know, one of our clients who we've helped and, and, and he shared with me, he said, you know, wow, you know. He said to me, he said, you know, Marlon, it's so amazing because M and D Accounting, they offered their services to help. Knowing, you know, I, you know, people, my team, so on and so forth, you know, right now we're, we're not working. And so Nicole said, look, I will, you know, you don't have to pay me right now, we'll get things into situation later. That shows character. And I wanna say thank you, Nicole, for walking the talk. It's easy to talk the talk, but you're walking the talk. And so I just wanna say thank you, Tony, Nicole, it's been phenomenal. You know, it makes me feel like I can go back and get my. You know, it makes me feel like I can go back and get my accounting degree.
Thanks for having me. I definitely want to come back.
What?
Yes, happy back.
She could be our resident tax expert.
That's right. That's right.
We have affinity for accountants. I mean, I'm.
Yeah, that was news to me. I did not even know about you being an accountant.
Yeah, I got a. Absolutely, absolutely. So, and you know, Marlon, you know, you're my good buddy. And, you know, I don't keep score, but, you know, I think I've just nailed it with the guests I've invited to the show. I'm just. Like a public, you know what I'm saying? He put me on blast, Nicole.
Yeah, I see, I see.
I love Marlon because he's so inspiring though. I mean, just seriously. I mean, he's very inspiring. You know, I think, you know, he inspires, I inform. We, but we're passionate about bringing this information to all of you. And as you can see, we're not just about what we do, but it's about what we do collectively, bringing other professionals, other experts in. And I have an accounting degree, but don't ask me anything about taxes today. My information is dated. And so it's very important that we surround ourselves with a team, just like Nicole was saying. And so we just want to keep bringing this great information to you. And again, faith without work is dead. So what we want you to do is we want you to take it. And I saw Phyllis put on, it all began with a budget, and it does. If I sit down with you, I'm going to ask you about your budget. Do you have one? If you don't have one, you need to make one. Because it all starts there. It all starts with having an idea. How can you really talk about where you want to go if you don't know where you are today? And so I think that's very appropriate and very true. And that's part of the team. And that's part of the team. So again, we thank everyone for being on tonight and we look forward to hearing from you. And Marlon, it's time for your signature clothes.
Thank you, brother.
And then thank you again, Nicole, for being with us.
Thank you for having me.
And we will certainly have you back on the show. And thank you for inviting your family, your mom and your sisters. So it's good. I feel very proud of you with good reason. And, you know, shout out to my family as well. Everyone stay healthy and well. Wash your hands. Keep social distance, wear masks, do whatever it takes to stay healthy and well, because we need to hear.
One of the things I want to say, thank you, Tony, man, phenomenal, man, always bringing the heat, bringing the fire. And for those of you that are watching, you know, again, every Thursday, 8:00 PM, you know, we were like, we did this first town hall meeting, I want to say, on April 2nd, three weeks ago. And the responses were just so incredible. We were only going to do one. But then we said, you know what? There is an opportunity to share good information. And so I want to thank you. But again, you know, definitely follow our page, you know, and then spread the word, you know? Come back next week and, you know, get, make sure you send an email to info@therelmoneycoach. We will email you out. We have an ebook entitled, Recession-Proof Retirement Complimentary. It is phenomenal. I promise you, you will love it. So send an email to info@therelmoneycoach.com. And in closing, want to say thank you for your time. Time is our most precious commodity. Money comes and goes. You know, we can, you know, earn money, grow money, and it can evaporate, you know? And the thing is, and unfortunately, right now, a lot of people who had their money in the stock market were very exposed, you know? You know, the Dow, NASDAQ, everything's gone down 24%, 29%. So my point is that, you know, let's learn from this situation. Let's truly grow from it. Because information is not power. Information is only power when you take action. And that's why Tony said earlier, faith and fear can't operate at the same time. So when you act, right, there's power. You're taking action. And so again, we say thank you. And in closing, I want to say, on behalf of The Real Money Coach, we appreciate you, we value you, and remember, there's greatness within you. And remember this, a vision without action is just a dream. A lot of action without a vision is merely a passing of time. But a vision with action can change the world. I am Marlon Smith, on behalf of The Real Money Coach in partnership with my brother from another, Tony Jackson. We say thank you. And we'll see you next Thursday, 8:00 PM, with another phenomenal show. Spread the word because together we stand and we will grow through this. Stay blessed.